All right, folks, we're going to get started. Council members and panelists, if you would please turn on your cameras. We are here for Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. Today, we will be hearing Council Bill 21-0159, Procurement Zero Emission Vehicles. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. My council colleagues joining me, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Isaac Gitze Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee. I didn't say him. Staff to the committees, Marguerite Curran. Joining us on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott is Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Daniel Ramos, as well as Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Representing Council President, Nick Mosby is Legislative Director Nikki Thompson. And representing Comptroller Bill Henrys, Casey Kelleher. I believe that's anyone. If I missed anyone from the council, the mayor's office, or the council president's office, please advise. Otherwise, I am going to turn it over to Councilman Mark Conway, sponsor of the bill, for brief introductory remarks. Councilman Conway, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for everybody for coming today. Really appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the bill we have here today pushing for EV vehicles in the city. Very plainly, the bill aims to achieve 100% EV vehicles by 2040 and 50% by 2030. This bill was one I brought forward after the IPCC report last summer that urgently stated that we should be doing everything in our power to address the impacts of climate change. But this isn't an issue that is just global. This is an issue that affects everyday Baltimoreans. EV vehicles, of course, are important because one of our largest ways that we contribute to the climate change problem is through carbon coming from our vehicles. About 30% of the carbon that Baltimore City contributes to to the atmosphere comes from our vehicles. We today have just over 4,000 vehicles. And if we, instead of investing in carbon-intensive vehicles, began moving toward carbon-zero vehicles, we could significantly reduce that impact over time. So that's where this comes from. But not only does this have an impact on climate change, this also has an impact on air quality and health of everyday Baltimoreans who have to breathe in the exhaust of tailpipes that drive around every single day. I'm sure most of you drive vehicles that rely on gasoline. So, you know, this is a goal that has been discussed in our sustainability plan. But finally, this is a bill that intends to put some teeth to it and really commit to it as opposed to making a plan. So we'll look forward to discussion today about what this looks like. Excited to have the opportunity to talk about the bill, what it means to our agencies. And I appreciate Mr. Chair, Chair Costello, for the opportunity to have the discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We are going to now step through agency reports. I know that we've received a few that are not yet uploaded to Legistar. We're going to leave Department of General Services until the end of the agencies because they're really going to have the substantive information on this. Let's start with Office of the Comptroller. Our report is favorable. Ms. Kelleher, anything to add?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, no, nothing to add. We stand by our report.
Thank you. Let's move to Department of Transportation. Liam Davis, Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, be right there. Just wanted to say, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection. I did want to add some additional comments, though. So please bear with me. We are no objection. We stand by that report. However, we do acknowledge that DGS is the primary city agency dealing with city fleet. City DOT, though, does oversee a small fleet under our Transit Bureau. And those are primarily our free, fair, term city circulator and harbor connector. We're just asking that two critical factors be considered when we talk about fleet conversion. Those factors are going to be, what are the, what's the existing life, projected lifespan of the existing vehicles? Those need to be measured in terms of when does it make sense to replace the vehicle? Secondly, what does it look like in terms of infrastructure requirements necessary to support zero emissions vehicles? So for DOT, for term city circulator, that would, like fleet conversion to EVs would include upgrading the yard so that you have those fleet charging capabilities built in, as well as any maintenance aspects that need to be factored in. An additional thing worth considering is during the 2021 state legislative session, Senate Bill 137 was adopted, which calls on MTA to convert their fleet to zero emissions buses. I'm getting some feedback if someone can mute. But part of that bill has led MTA to conduct a feasibility study for converting their fleet, excuse me. And a similar study is being conducted by M.MTA's Office of Local Transit Support, which the circulator falls under. So they're going to be working with our Transit Bureau in terms of identifying ways we can, you know, achieve fleet conversion. So with all that in mind, we do stand by our bill report as no objection. But just wanted to include those really important points. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Department of Public Works defers to DGS. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Marsha Collins, Department of Public Works. Yes, we defer to DGS. They are our fleet managers, and we work closely with them in any and all of our fleet maintenance and fleet purchasing. We had, I mentioned in my bill response, that we had the opportunity several years ago to test out some electric vehicles. These were the small sedan vehicles. Since we have regional facilities, and they worked very well. And staff enjoyed driving them. So I don't think it's, I think for those types of vehicles, people would be very interested in having them. But at the end of the day, we, if we do this as thoroughly as the councilman would like to see in his bill and as quickly, we will need to, we will need to build into our budgets the charging stations, particularly for our regional facilities. I know years ago, the Energy Office was successful in getting grants to build on the public charging stations, and we're working to put them around the city. I don't know if those particular grants still exist, but I do know that anything that we would do for our own vehicles in the city fleet would probably, that burden would probably be on us and on our budgets. I am hopeful that the infrastructure bill that was passed would provide DGS with some opportunities there to see if we could expand our efforts. But again, we're deferring to DGS, who we believe is the best folks, both in the fleet and in Energy Office, to assist with this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I saw a question in the chat from Mr. Heinz. I know Mr. Heinz, he's a constituent in the 11th District. Mr. Heinz and others, there will be an opportunity for public comment. So we will certainly get to you in short order. Let's move over to the Law Department. Understand that it's favorable and approved for form and legal sufficiency. Mr. Turbola?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department has prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent. Thank you. Baltimore Police Department, favorable with comments. Ms. Wordsberger?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Michelle Wordsberger. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I'm joined by our Deputy Commissioner for Administrative Services, Jim Gillis and Shannon Conway. As you mentioned, we have absolutely no objections to the bill, but we do want to raise just a couple of things, a couple of items to consider. First and foremost, we applaud Councilman Conway's leadership on this issue. We embrace it. We have actually begun adding hybrid vehicles to our fleet. But in terms of zero emission vehicles, there are some concerns. First and foremost, we think that we may have to obtain more vehicles. And that is because currently, we use the vehicles that have been assigned to districts for each of the three shifts. So when one shift ends, they hand the keys over to the next shift and so on. And in order to accommodate the time that will be needed to charge a depleted battery, we will need to probably have additional vehicles. Another thing to consider is that our officers use their vehicle as their workspace. They have lots of specialized equipment and technology that will require additional battery life and battery capacity. And so we need to consider that in terms of making sure that the vehicles can accommodate that. And then the final issue to consider is, we would need to make sure we have adequate number of charging stations, both at each of the nine districts, at headquarters, and then at kind of strategic areas in case, for some reason, a vehicle that is out on patrol needs to be charged rather quickly. And we stand ready to answer any questions, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wordsberger. Parking Authority of Baltimore City, Miss Themelis, I do not think we have a agency comments report from them. Is that correct?
There should be an agency report. If I didn't attach it to the materials that were provided, but they don't have any objection to the passage of the legislation, but I will make sure to send that over to the committee now.
Okay, do they have anyone on the line?
I have not seen anybody join, but I will take a look through the attendee list.
Okay. And then Office of Sustainability, I do not believe we have a report from them on Legistar yet.
Hi. Go ahead. Yeah, good morning, Chairman and members of the committee. Ava Richardson, Sustainability Manager for the Office of Sustainability, also representing the Department of Planning. Our bill report for this bill was favorable. As was mentioned, transportation contributes 30% to greenhouse gas emissions across the city. And we know that transitioning to zero emissions vehicles can help the city meet broad climate goals. However, we do acknowledge that additional charging infrastructure will be needed in order to make the bill successful. We do stand by our report, and I just wanted to say that we have an electric vehicle in our department, and we use it. The team seems to be able to use it fine with no issues. But we stand by our report, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Do we have a written report from the Office of Sustainability?
There is a written report. I think it wasn't, it didn't get uploaded into the Legistar yet. But it should be, I think it'll be sent to you shortly.
So Nina, can you send that report and Parking Authority report to the committee, please? And please copy Marguerite and Natwana so they get uploaded. Thank you. Okay, next. And I'm sorry, Mr. Ramos. I should have gone to you first. My apologies, sir. Office of the City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the council. The City Administrator agrees with the bill with amendments. As you've seen by the mayor's action plan, we are incredibly committed to the issues around sustainability and environmental justice. This falls clearly in line with both of those things. We believe firmly that sustainability isn't just an environmental issue. It's quickly becoming a city financial and budget issue. I do want to highlight some of the great work that has been done over the last, during my tenure here in the city. It's not just on the composition of our fleet, but it's also about just the sheer number of vehicles that we've done, that we have, and the downward pressure that's been applied to reduce that. Things like the master lease, making sure that we have money available to be able to do conversions and to have more modern fleet and to replace the oldest and and least carbon-neutral items in our fleet. It's about looking at our take-home policy, especially amongst our bigger agencies, and making sure that we are driving down pressure to reduce those numbers, as well as a one-for-one policy on replacements that DGS has been enforcing throughout the city to bring some discipline around the number of vehicles. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And the amendments that you're referring to, I'm assuming cover what was in the DGS report, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And there's nothing in addition to that in terms of amendments, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Department of Finance, unfavorable. Mr. Sutnamay or Ms. James? Ms. James, there you are.
Good morning. Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report as written. We do oppose the legislation. We support the intent and support the work that has been going on in DGS and amongst agencies to make this conversion. But considering the timeline that is laid out, there are major fiscal concerns that we would have to meet this that would majorly increase the costs and the way that we finance our vehicles, and could also impact the way that the replacement for the fleet and impact the fleet in the long term. Our bill report lays out some of those cost estimates for four classes of vehicles based on some figures that were shared with us by DGS. And they show the current costs compared to zero emission vehicle comparison. And they also lay out in terms of the anticipated purchasing for fiscal 2022, what the increased cost would be for conventional vehicles versus zero emission. Just to note, if we were to purchase 72 vehicles from those four classes, given the $25 million that we are anticipating to spend for fiscal 2022, about, that'd be about 31% of the anticipated purchase amount, but it would equate to 89% of the annual financing. So it would drastically impact how many vehicles we could replace. In addition, there would be, as others have noted, infrastructure and supply costs and some other concerns around down-the-road personnel costs in terms of training and retaining employees. We do acknowledge that in the long term, there would be major, there would be savings, and we would, we are supportive of making this conversion. But consider, but the timeline and the impact on finances and the financing plans that we have, as Deputy Chief Administrator Ramos mentioned, around the master lease are what are concerning to us. Finally, I should note that the bill places a lot of of the responsibility with the Chief Procurement Officer. Keisha Brown, the Acting Chief Procurement Officer, is on the call currently. But I wanted to note that DGS, as others have mentioned, is really the subject matter expert in this area in terms of the availability of vehicles that could be converted, as well as the actual collection of the data around procurement of these vehicles. And so there would be a lot, there'd be a strong partnership with them if the bill stays as written with the responsibility with the Chief Procurement Officer. We would have to heavily partner with them, which we've discussed. So yes, as I stated, we just have concerns around the financing, support the intent, but believe that the timeline creates a lot of financing concerns. And for those reasons, we oppose this legislation as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. We're going to go to DGS next, but before we go there, I'd like to ask you and Ms. Brown, over the next couple of minutes, to think about two things, which I plan to ask. One, I think everyone on this call is in agreement on the policy piece here. I'd really like to understand specifically what it is that Department of Finance would support here, right? So like, there's different timeframes in this bill, 2030 and 2040, for example. I'd like a tangible response to what it is that Department of Finance would be willing to support. That's the first piece. And the second piece, which is probably going to be more in Ms. Brown's wheelhouse when we talk about procurement, is potential savings that could be realized by rightsizing what I believe to be existing leasing agreements for vehicles that are used by city personnel, which seem to be a little out of whack with respect to cost in an effort to save money and be able to utilize those cost savings in order to achieve the policy goals outlined in this bill. So I do plan to drill very deep down into those two questions. So I would ask you and Ms. Brown to think about that over the next few minutes as we go through the DGS report. I believe those are all the agency reports with the exception of DGS. I'm just going to run through these out loud to make sure that I didn't miss anyone. We did law, we did finance, we did DPW, we did police, we did transportation, we did Parking Authority, we did Office of the City Administrator, we did Office of Sustainability. Sorry, we did the Office of the Comptroller. Miss Themelis, if you could send over the written reports to the committee again from Parking Authority, Office of Sustainability, and Office of City Administrator. Also, if you could kindly remind Parking Authority that there's an expectation that they have a representative on calls in which a bill is referred to them, that would be deeply appreciated. And finally, we are going to Department of General Services Director, Niagara Nash, you are up. And before you start, give me one second. Colleagues, I'm going to ask everyone on the committee to pull up the DGS written response, because we're going to step through each of these items, one by one. I had a call yesterday with the Director and Councilman Conway to make sure that we were going to be in a position to address all of DGS's comments. So Director, if you want to give a quick overview of where you're at, and then, once you're done with that overview, then I'd like to step through each of the proposed amendments that you have, one by one. Director, please take it away.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. The DGS report, thank you. The DGS report is not on Legistar. It's, can somebody tell me when or by whom it was sent to us by email so I can find that easily enough?
Yep, Councilman, great question. Appreciate that. I'm going to, give me one second.
And, Mr. Chair, before you move to your DGS, I just, it's something that I want to piggyback on what you just said.
All right, man. Yep, one second. Okay, so first, let me do Councilman Dorsey first. Give me one second. Sorry about that. Okay, Councilman Dorsey, your item, I am sending an email right now to the committee. I got Dorsey McCray, Burnett, Stokes, Schleifer, VP Middleton, and Councilman Conway. So I forwarded Dorsey McCray, Burnett, Stokes, Schleifer, Middleton, and Conway. Okay, Councilman Dorsey, I just forwarded an email from Miss Themelis that has all the reports in it, as of a couple of days ago. But in short, DGS is in there. Okay, let's go to VP Middleton next, and then we'll go to DGS.
So, Mr. Chair, you were right on target with, when you were talking to the Department of Finance and referencing, you know, dates like 2030 and 2040. And as a, as a past representative, I'll give one example of, I was on the Parking Authority Board for seven years. And they really took a lead in just really starting to address working with vehicles and, you know, placing stations in parking garages and so on. They were thinking forward. And it just shows to me that, and no disrespect to Department of Finance, but you also, you know, there's a representative that also sits on that board, and I'm sure other boards. And you, you can't just give reports for the moment of now. We have to think forward. And I think that's what this whole bill is about. Thinking forward, thinking of a plan to really push, you know, the, what we're looking for from this bill. I just, and I thank you for really bringing that up. And that's the connect that we, we're trying to emphasize with all the agencies. You gotta, you have to show us things that you have, because it's going to happen, and we need money, of course, to do that. But, and you have to plan that. It's going to happen. So I, no disrespect to Department of Finance, but you, you, you know, you sit on these boards as well. And you need to start sharing plans that you, that this is probably going to happen in 2030 or 2040. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. In agreement, and we're going to, we're going to drill down into that with finance and procurement very shortly. Director, so let's do the overview of DGS, and then we'll walk through each amendment one by one. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Chair Costello. I am Chi Chi Niagara Nash, the Director of the Department of General Services. I'm joined here today by individuals from within DGS who were instrumental in thinking through and submitting our response. Those people are our Chief of Fleet, Chris Lyons, our Deputy Chief of Energy, Julia K. Logz, our Fiscal Chief, Ben Brosh, and Andy Fullis are legislative liaisons. And I thank them for the work put into submitting this.
Excellent, thank you. We're ready, Director, we're ready to step through these one by one? I think the Director is having some connectivity issues. So I'm going to go to, I think, Ben? Am I right in the org chart here to go to you, Ben?
I'll attempt to step in her place while she gets connectivity figured out, yes.
Why don't, why don't we do this, Ben? Why don't we take a, take a quick pause? Why don't you give the Director a call and ask her to turn off her video and see if that works? All right, thank you. We'll hang tight for a minute.
I believe the Director's in the process of just switching computers. So she'll be back in a second.
We will wait for her. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Ben, how are we doing?
The Director said that she's working on getting her Mac going. So, yeah, I think she's in process. I don't have an exact time.
Check back in in a couple of minutes.
I am in.
Excellent, excellent. Please continue, Director.
My sincere apologies. That laptop is kaput right now. So I don't know where I left off. I was in the middle of thanking the folks on the team who contributed to our getting this response in. DGS is fully supportive of legislation that moves us in the, in the direction of decarbonizing the city's fleet. However, we do have several concerns, some of which are represented in the amendments that we submitted, and several others that we have had in conversation with some of the committee members previously. Our concerns essentially fall into, into three buckets here. First one being, and the first two buckets are issues that have been raised by several other agencies as they have submitted their responses. First one being the, the need to address the, the funding level for the fleet replacement plan. As Ms. James and DCAO Ramos referenced, the master lease currently commits to about $25 million for non-water wastewater replacements every year. Knowing that, at the moment, EV options are more expensive to procure. While they might be less expensive to maintain over the life cycle of the asset, there is an incremental cost on the front end for the procurement that would require additional fiscal commitment to replace the same number of vehicles as we can replace now with non-ZEV options. If we were to shift to replacing ZEV options in the quantities as required for us to meet the, the two levels of goals set. Additionally, as has been raised by, by other, by other agencies, the city's commitment to investing in the infrastructure that is required to be able to charge these assets is, is, is one that cannot be overlooked. It would, it's, I mean, it goes, without saying that, it does us no good to procure these assets if we will not have a sufficient charging infrastructure, both in the yards, behind the fence, essentially, for charging facilities for just city vehicles. So this, this would be different from efforts being made by, by DOT and others to increase the charging infrastructure for the, for the general public. What we would need to be investing here is in charging stations set up around the city, in the city yards, in the facilities where vehicles are parked overnight or when they are not on their scheduled shift. So those two, those are serious concerns that we have about ability to meet these goals. And, and they've been similarly articulated by others with, with specific data coming to you from Ms. James and the Finance Department. The third area in which we had some concerns are the ones that we articulated in the form of amendments. And my apologies again, because I very quickly had to switch laptops. I'm going to pull up our document real quick as I'm speaking. The amendments are, in, in nature, they are, they address three, three concerns, and we'll walk through them. One is a concern that has been raised by Ms. James about the, the role of the Bureau of Procurement versus the role of the Department of General Services in being the subject matter expert. Second concern is with the nature of the reporting that would be required. And I'll be happy, following this recap or summary, I will go deeper into all of them. And then, third on there was the, the, the need to, for any legislation to be, to be cognizant of, one, the availability now or availability in the future as, as we continue tracking the goals of zero emission vehicle or zero emission vehicle equivalent vehicles in the market at the time. So even as we set these goals, we have to be aware of what is currently and viable in the market. So while there might be test vehicles out there or concept vehicles, we certainly would not be investing in those until other fleets have tested them out and, and made sure that, you know, they have the durability to be able to drive on, on, on streets like Baltimore streets, to be able to perform the, the very physically demanding, essentially, use that city, that city vehicles go through. And then, aligned with, with, with our concerns about the availability now is also the applicability of said vehicles. So the Police Department brought up a concern about a need to increase their fleet. Should, should, should this bill be implemented without taking this into consideration? And that is because currently in the market, there are, if we look specifically at just the BPD fleet, there is no ZEV in the market that would be able to have a 24-hour charge battery, a battery that can run for 24 straight hours, which is the way in which they use their patrol vehicles. We have similar concerns with some of the large equipment that is used by DPW, DOT, about the ability to, to get a full shift out of a full charge of battery. And so, for that reason, we want to make sure that availability and applicability is, is recognized in the form of this legislation. And at that point, Chair Costello, I'm, I'm going to quickly pull up the, the, our amendments, I can walk through them step by step, if you would just permit me.
Let me, let me know once you get the, let me know once you have the report up. I'm going to, I'll start off and just title each one, and then you can give me your dispo, you can provide the committee with your disposition of it. And then we'll turn it over to Councilman Conway, and we'll, we'll discuss how we're going to address each of these.
All right. All right, two devices going. I have it up on my phone. I am ready.
Excellent, excellent. So let's start with 35A2, colleagues. This is on the middle of page two of the DGS Agency Comments Report. So Director, for each of these, just give us a 30 to 45-second description of what the issue is and how you'd like to see it addressed. So let's start with 35A2.
Yes, sir. So 35A2, one and two, the amendment, or the proposed amendment, the requested change is to include language about taking into consideration the availability now or as, as time progresses of a ZEV equivalent in the market. So we do not want a commitment made to, to that we would be able to replace 50% of the city's fleet or procure, or that 50% of the city's fleet would be procured as a ZEV equivalent without taking into account, again, what is available now. And what we know to be available now, for the most part, is sedans and light, and light, other light vehicles. And so just having that, that wording in there to, to, to account for what is available now.
Thank you. Councilman Conway?
That sounds good.
You could just respond to these one. Okay, so we're good. We're, we're going to get that addressed.
Yep.
Colleagues, I'm going to open it up for each of the amendments, just if there's any concerns on that specific amendment. If you have other questions for DGS or for the agencies, I'm going to ask that you hold those until we finish walking through DGS's reports. Colleagues, are there any questions or concerns on that one amendment? Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, maybe I missed this. By today, we mean the date of enactment of the ordinance? Or all two days going forward?
I, I can help you out there, Chi Chi. So Chi Chi and I had a conversation about exactly that, Councilman. It's going to be present, so as we assess this year by year, it'll be based on that moment. So not just today, but next year, when we're reassessing where we are, it'll be based on next year and the availability of vehicles next year. So we'll, we'll figure out exactly what the language should be for the amendment, but we want it to be true to what's available in the moment.
Thank you, yeah. Today doesn't seem to hit that as far as I can understand. So something to express in any given year of procurement. Thank you.
Great. Colleagues, any other questions on this specific amendment? Director, Councilman Conway, we should be able to address Councilman Dorsey's concerns. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Excellent. All right, 35A3B, product availability, Director?
35AB, okay. This speaks to two comments that I made previously. One is the replacement of city purchasing agent with DGS. Knowing that DGS is the subject matter expert, DGS would be better placed to know what is coming soon to the market, what other municipalities might have tested out successfully, what the manufacturers are proposing, and would therefore be better placed than the city purchasing agent to be able to certify what is a ZEV vehicle available now. Additionally, the second, the second amendment that you see there about operation reliability specifications speaks to the comment I made about making sure that we are working directly with our customer agencies to understand how they operate their vehicles, to make sure that whatever it is that gets specked out, that gets specified out for procurement, meets their ability to perform their job. So again, just in, a quick example is for DPW, if we were today to completely replace their, their load packer fleet with ZEVs, we would have to double it, because there is no vehicle on the market right now that can run a full eight, 10, 12-hour shift like they're having to run now in trying to make up some of the, the backups in recycling and, and refuse collection.
Thank you very much. Councilman Conway?
I, I think we're good on that. I think there are other special considerations where operationally, the technology today doesn't sort of fit the, the need. And so I think working with DGS to understand what that need is before requiring any EV vehicle does make sense.
Excellent, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or concerns on this specific amendment? Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my concern here is whether this is a two-way street. That is, the way this amendment, or this, this section of the bill reads is its aim is toward making vehicles, making, ensuring the availability of vehicles that have a kind of a heavy workload to them versus the other direction of saying there are vehicles that have a very, very light workload, where not even the lightest vehicle that is in our fleet today is necessitated by the lightness of that duty. That is to say, if DGS has the opportunity and obligation to assess whether a heavy-duty vehicle is heavy enough or available, how much lighter can we go where a light-duty vehicle is all that is required? Our parking enforcement, for example, our housing code enforcement, and many of the vehicles that are currently used for nothing more than driver transport could easily be replaced at a fraction of the cost with e-bikes. And we're building out bicycling infrastructure all around the city. And what better reason to continue and, and at nothing like the rate that we should be for that matter? You know, what greater motivation could we have to build it out than to accommodate a decarbonized fleet of our own to get people, every, to get city workers where they need to go? I mean, the cost and, and value of, of an e-bike, even today, is incredibly, you know, the, the cost is low, the value is incredibly high for what it can deliver. And this is something that we ourselves, as a city, need to actively participate in normalizing, is people substituting single-occupant vehicles with suitable alternatives. So I'd like to know how we can include language here that kind of mandates that same level of assessment in that kind of reverse direction. And if somebody can speak to this. And, and I'll say, this also, I mean, obviously, very directly relates to the, the thought that the Chair teed up with the Finance Department as they were giving their report, that we can and should reduce our, our fleet wherever possible. And, and I guess I would say also needs to include mode, that we need to, as we're looking at 2030, 2040, whatever, this, saying, this legislation, I think, needs to also include objective mode-share goals.
Start with Councilman Conway?
I, I think it's a really interesting idea, a good idea, and I think something that, you know, once, once again, I think DGS can help us begin to work with the agencies to think about, thinking about new ways for vehicles, new approaches to vehicles, whether they be scooters or bikes or anything like that. I think that's definitely a really interesting idea. Yeah, I, I think it's a good way to think about it. I think as far as the heavy-duty trucks or heavy-usage vehicles, that's where I think things get a little bit murkier. My, the immediate one that jumped to mind for me were EMS vehicles that are essentially run 27, 24/7, and they get run into the ground. And so finding that balance, I think, is tough, but you're right. Some of these super-light-duty vehicles where there will only be one person in that vehicle at all times could be considered as a, you know, a bike or something like that. So, yeah, I think it's an interesting idea.
Director, any feedback? Director, any feedback?
Uh, interesting concept. I agree with Councilman Conway that it is definitely a conversation that DGS can take the lead on having with agencies, starting off with researching what what non vehicular options or non sedan-type options are in the market and then engage in conversations with the agencies. Definitely, DGS, more so than any other agency, is the one that ought to be having those conversations. And so we can, we can take that on. I I do not think at this point, I know at this point, we would not be ready to submit any kind of report or information on the viability of that notion with the agencies, but absolutely happy and ready to engage in conversation.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else on this one before we move to the next amendment?
Mr. Chair, this is Victor from the Law Department. There is concern with striking out the city purchasing agent. It's an easy fix. Let me tell you what the problem is. We have a charter amendment that says city purchasing has to be spent, has to be centralized. And this particular provision is based on something in Article five of the city code talking, talking about the purchase of American vehicles. And there they talk about strongly about the city purchasing agent having the role of certification. The easy fix on both of these is just to say that, just to keep the city purchasing agent in there, but just saying the city purchasing agent, comma, with the agreement of the director of DGS certifies in writing or whatever else. So we just add that little phrase in there. We get rid of this particular legal concern that we have.
Thank you. My my initial reaction to that is that we're making two people responsible, and this is like, you know, this is course one oh one in how things don't get done in city government. So Director, how do you, how do you want to respond to that?
Can't really respond to to the the legal aspect of it, but I I do agree that having both myself and and the city purchasing agent on there might be troublesome. Perhaps instead of the language that that Mr. Travilla suggested, it would be this, if if language pertaining to purchasing agent has to stay in there, it can be the city purchasing agent. I guess working the language where it states that I have a responsibility to report to the purchasing agent who then has to report.
Director, can I jump in real quick? I I got an idea. What what if we say, Victor, what if we say DGS on behalf of the city purchasing agent? Or are we not allowed to delegate authority like that?
Yeah, you can do that. I mean, that that would work. I mean, I, you know, I, look, this is an internal procedure ultimately. And, you know, if if DGS just basically gave some sort of certification to the purchasing office, this would, this would work. I don't even know if we necessarily need to reflect it in law. But if you want to do it the way you're suggesting, Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be good with that.
Okay. Director, do you have any concerns with that?
No, sir.
Ms. Brown, are you good with that?
Yes, just for clarification and for my clarification and make sure I understand. I do recall that language in the charter in terms of certifying and being the responsibility of city purchasing agent. Would this language basically require the director to inform the city purchasing agent who will make the final determination?
Well, is that we are talking about a partnership here. So, I mean, so one way or another, both of them are collaborating in some fashion.
Right. I I I guess I would just wanted to be clear about that Chair, Chair Costello before responding. Based on the way that it's being articulated, it appears to be a shared responsibility. And rather I sit in that chair or not, whoever the city purchasing agent, it is my understanding from an industry perspective that typically the city purchasing agent does or the chief procurement officers certify those types of of commodities.
So do you wanna, do you wanna say, so the city purchasing agent would be, who's the, who's the lead? Someone's gotta be responsible for it, and that and that will make the other person and and then we'll have the person who's responsible for it responsible for consulting with the other agency. Before you all answer that, Council Vice President Middleton?
I just wanna suggest that our city administrator should be in in charge of working with these to that's his job to figure out who's gonna be in charge, I would say. We have a new city administrator that's over these agencies. That's where the, that communication should come into play.
Thank you, Madam VP. So let's, let's jump to Deputy C A O Ramos. Do you have a position or take on this?
I I'm sorry, Chairman, I had to step away for a call. Can we?
All good. We're, we're in the DGS agency comments report. We are on page two. We're on the third item of amendments, specifically thirty-five A five, the annual report. Currently, it it reads that the city purchasing agent with cooperation from all city agencies shall submit an annual report to the mayor and city council on the number and amount of these vehicles as provided for, or contracts and subcontracts as provided for in the subtitle.
Mr. Chair, I thought we're on determining the the reliability and specifications. So that's eight, thirty-five.
I'm sorry, thirty-five A three B. My apologies. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Ramos, we're on thirty-five A three B. I I'm getting ahead of myself here. Must be foreshadowing. So, so DGS is suggesting that they should be responsible for these two items. I I tend to agree with that. Currently, the 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 proposed legislation has the city purchasing agent. Obviously, both of these agencies, procurement and DGS, play a role. I just wanted, I wanna get to the bottom of who's the one agency responsible, and then that agency shall do this thing in consultation with the other agency. Does that make sense?
I I believe so.
So who's, who's in, who's in charge here, procurement or or DGS?
So I believe on the, so ultimately, I think this new one is probably is is possibly a little too prescriptive, like ultimately, the the administration is responsible for providing that guidance. But I, I, in terms of, as we need something that's documented, the Department of General Services is the manager of the, of the data related to our fleet.
Okay, so go back to, oh, go ahead, Mr. Ramos.
So I I know we were, we're very close on the cusp of of looking at at procurement holistically through a third-party vendor. I, again, I I don't wanna lose track of the bigger picture, which is we wanna make sure that we we're being held to account, that we are providing the necessary information for for city council to hold us accountable to this legislation. I I don't wanna get too far into the weeds and distract from the, from the overarching goal, which is that we wanna make sure that we're providing the best information, and that's gonna require, you know, not just my office, office, but procurement sometimes with, you know, all the various city agencies that hold, that hold items in the fleet.
Okay, I'm starting to get confused, so.
If if it's the reporting of the status of the fleet, regardless of, you know, who, who in the charters enumerated to be able to 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 purchase the vehicles, when we're reporting what the fleet status is, it should be the Department of General Services.
Okay. Victor, are you good with that? The Department of General Services in consultation with the Office of Procurement?
Yep, I'm gonna be good with that.
Excellent. DGS, are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown, procurement, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Colleagues, is there anyone who has a concern with that proposed solution?
So remember, and Deputy Mayor Ramos kind of alluded to it as well. At the end of the day, the, our city administrator needs to be the one to take the charge to to mandate this. He needs to be involved in all of this. And that's something we need to get used to, and he needs to start attending our meetings. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Madam VP. And just to make sure your concerns addressed, I I think the you correct me if I'm wrong, Madam VP, it sounds like the city administrator's weighing in or his office is weighing in, saying this shall be the agency that's responsible for for kind of this coordination. Mr. Ramos, is that correct?
That is correct, but I just wanna be clear that, you know, I I am here on on behalf, representing the city administrator you can attend today. General Services, environmental issues generally report directly up to me. So I wanna be clear that, you know, General Services is the agency of record. It is within a structure that we have created.
Understood. Okay, I think we're on the same page.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. I don't know if you are at that point about the contract, the fleet contract, when you get a chance.
We will, we will come back to you, Councilman Stokes. Yes, that that will be the second question when we come back to general questions after we work through the amendments. Councilman Conway?
I just wanna make sure I fully understand, so that when we go back four amendments for this, DGS will be responsible for the decision with the consult, with the consultation of purchasing.
Uh, yes, so that's gonna apply to item number two, which is thirty-five A three B, product availability. And that is also going to apply to thirty-five A five annual report. And and just to confirm that, Mr. Ramos, Ms. Brown, Director, that that's correct, right? We're in agreement. And Victor, we're in agreement that this will be the solution for both thirty-five A three B product availability as well as thirty-five A five annual report. DGS will be the lead in consultation with the Office of Procurement, correct? Everyone good with that? Outstanding. Everyone's in agreement. Okay, so we just knocked out items two and three. Director, we have some additional comments. And I don't believe those additional comments, thirty-five A three B, thirty-five A four and thirty-five A five, require amendments. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. They speak to the previously discussed amendments and just add a bit more information to them. But do not require a separate conversation. Thank you.
Okay, so Director, we've addressed all of the proposed amendments that you have.
That is correct. And if I might just add one thing from our conversation yesterday, because it was important. As in the reporting that there will be, and again, this, this is much more administrative and perhaps, as you mentioned yesterday, discussed in rules and rights. But in the reporting, DGS will provide data not just on the procurement of zero-emission vehicles, but on the procurement of 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 vehicles that move us into a less carbon-reliant footprint. So those could be biodiesel or hybrid, just so that we are making measure of improvement to to that effect, even though it may not be a full-on Z E V.
Understood. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So before we move on to general questions, kind of quick point of order for how we're gonna move forward. We're, we're not taking a vote today. We have to get amendments drafted. Councilman Conway, you're gonna be, I'm assuming you're gonna be taking the lead on having amendments drafted by D L R. You'll be working closely with the director, with Nina, and with Nikki from the Council President's Office to make sure everyone is good with those amendments. And then I will wait to hear back from you when we will schedule a a work session slash voting session for the bill to vote it out. You're good with that?
That sounds great, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nina, Nikki, Director, everyone's good with that approach?
DGS is good. Thank you, sir.
You. All right, excellent. Okay. Now let's move, and no other agencies have proposed amendments, correct? Okay, finance and procurement, I'm gonna get to my questions in a minute, but I'm gonna go to Councilman Stokes first. Councilman, you had a question about, I think, the fleet contract?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Chi Chi, she know I have had some conversations with her about the city-owned vehicles, mostly the council people drive. I wonder who is responsible for maintenance of those those cars, because I have to take mine to a car dealership. I don't know what that contract currently look like, and wonder why we not using our mechanics if it's just an oil change. We going to a dealership to get oil change, and I guess we been, have to build a dealership change the oil when we already have our own mechanics can do that. So a question is, who currently are responsible for the maintenance of those vehicles? And when do that contract expire, and why we, why I gotta take my car to a dealership to get the oil changed?
Good morning, Councilman Stokes. Thank you for that question. So the vehicles that are, that some council people opt to take on for for their offices purposes are not city-owned vehicles, they are leased vehicles. And that is why those vehicles cannot be serviced at a city facility. DGS is not permitted to make repairs on vehicles that are not city-owned. And that is why for regular preventative preventative maintenance, such as oil changes, you know, wheel tire rotation, all that, all those P M's, as well as any corrective. So if your vehicle breaks down and needs, needs a repair, that is all that that's all addressed by the company from whom you all are leasing. Those lease contracts are citywide contracts that are managed by the Bureau of Procurement. And so as council people opt to lease vehicles, that is something that is done through the Council President's Office directly and not through DGS.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, what's that?
No, I just wanted to make sure I understand it a little better, so I'll be clear on it too. You know, we had some conversations about this before, and I'm I'm glad you explained it more in detail, and since my colleagues is on on the call, I thought it was a good time to ask that question, so everybody have a clear understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Director Brown, the the lease agreement we have with Acme, what do, what do we, what do we pay monthly for a a vehicle that is leased by a city council member?
Councilman Costello, I believe that depends on the type of vehicle. If you would like for me to, you know, respond to a specific vehicle, I certainly can get those numbers and respond back to you.
Yeah, I had a Chevy Equinox last term, and I think I was paying like five hundred and seventy dollars a month for it. Pretty, pretty sure I could get a Ford F three fifty or a Lexus for that. Not that I want either of those vehicles. But I suspect there's, there's significant rightsizing that needs to occur in that leasing agreement. In addition, the availability of vehicles. And this current term, I know there are multiple members of the city council who have been given vehicles that are produced by companies not American-owned, which to me seems kind of contradictory to what local government in the United States should be purchasing and or leasing. I would love to have a offline conversation about that procurement vehicle. It was like a triple pun intended, that procurement contract for vehicles and and how we can make that more effective in the immediate future. I I wanna jump over to Mara from Finance. So can you, can you walk me through specifically what finance would be comfortable with here?
So unfortunately, I can't necessarily say what a timeline would look like or percentages. We would need to do more analysis on that end. Again, I'll reiterate, though, that we are supportive of making this transition and working with DGS to understand what the need would be to what, how that would work with the vehicles, and then mapping out in terms of the front payments that would need to be done by where we issue debt, and then the debt service costs, where we're paying that off later to understand what the increase would need to be, and then see how that would work. I'll just say we would need more time to do that analysis and work with DGS to really understand the data. As Deputy City Administrator Ramos said, they and Director Ngonya Nash has said that they hold that data. And so to understand the replacement cycles and what would come next and and the availability of vehicles. Cycles and what would come next and and the availability of vehicles to cycle in ZEV. Um, we would need to work more and more closely with them to come up with an analysis to understand the costs and what would be needed. For the front end financing and the debt service budget moving forward.
Um, Ms. James, I I genuinely appreciate the role that the Department of Finance and specifically BBMR plays in the fiscal stewardship of our city. Um. That being said, I think if if finance is going to outright oppose a bill. Despite agreeing with the policy, not so much the specifics. That it would be helpful if the department provides recommendations for amendments to the bill. Um, to ensure that. We are meeting the policy, uh, need. Uh, but we're doing so in what finance and or BBMR deems as fiscally responsible. So moving forward, um, for any bills in in this committee, I would respectfully request. That if you need more time to to not just say, you know, we agree with the policy, but we're opposed for the following fiscal reasons. That you you read, please reach, please feel free to reach out in the future directly or through the mayor's office government relations. To advise that you need more time, um, and I will do everything I can to ensure that the committee. Works with the administration on the timing so that we can get that information because I think. That information would be very valuable. Unfortunately, the the train has kind of left the station and and. Without having that information, we have no, no choice but to to move forward. Obviously, we're not doing that today, but I want to make sure that the committee is taking into consideration, um. You know, thoughts and concerns that finance has, not just those concerns, but proposed solutions to these problems. Um, because of the strong fiscal stewardship that that finance and BBMR have have demonstrated. Um, over the last decade. So moving forward, is that a reasonable commitment that finance and BBMR can make?
Certainly understood and I, um, I believe that we are comfortable with depending on when the next session would be working with DGS in that timeframe. Knowing that they were coming to this meeting as well with some amendments that we. On our end, didn't get a chance to fully review, unfortunately, before coming here that we would hope that we can. Between now and then, work with them to have more to bring to the committee at that point.
Uh, De- Deputy Administrator, uh, Ramos, you look like you're ready to say something.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Sorry, I try to figure out where the raise hand function is here, but. Successfully, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure how professional that. Flagging you down would would be in this in this forum. Uh, would would it be helpful, Mister Chair, just because, uh, it it is a a labor of love, not just with with finance, but also. With general services, the the process by which they do the fleet replacement model through the master lease would be helpful for fleet to. To give, so it it's a little bit of a moving target, you know. Business models change be in the agency, you know, year to year or mid-year. Uh, we have to look at the things like, did we get a bad batch and we're we're forced to do earlier replacements than we expected? Did we get? Uh, more vehicles totaled in a year than 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 was anticipated? Would it be helpful to to provide that overview of all the different factors that go into the master lease replacement model? Um, and I think as one of the things that might might be helpful would be to provide, what is the baseline? What do we replace now? And what would the timeline look? Should we do nothing? Versus, you know, what is, what is the, what is going to be needed to be able to do that replacement? Um, I just want to flag as. You know intimately that all the the fiscal pressures the city is under. And so I think, you know, in in defense of the Budget Office, it is something that we were prioritizing is a, it's a clear part of the mayor's action plan. But working backwards from we 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 have Kerwin coming, uh, and we're working around that. We have. Uh, all sorts of capital and facility issues that we we're working towards buying down that risk. So. I think first of all, like, Art, do you think it might be worthwhile to go through what what is all? All included in the in the fleet projections year to year and and too, just I want to put on the record that. It is, we we are doing the best we can with all the resources we have and we're trying to find find those business cases where we can do the conversions, where we're seeing the. Our return on investment that that can pay for itself and amplified the impact.
Let me, uh, let me respond on behalf of the committee and then I'll ask if the committee has anything to add, um, in in response to that. But I think. Um, first, um, want to thank Mayor Scott for kind of putting it out there on the line to to try and tackle procurement because that is a, um. Uh, a significant challenge that we've we've faced for some time now. So I I appreciate. Um, the mayor's commitment to to working on a very challenging and and. Not, um, not so much, uh, publicly rewarding issue like that. So really appreciate the the mayor's commitment there. That's one. Um, number two, I think it goes without saying that that your office is an integral part. Of of tackling this issue because it requires coordination amongst agencies. And I think most people on the council view, um, your office is as responsible for kind of, uh, being the conductor of the orchestra, right? And getting everyone in line on the same page. So certainly, um, a appreciate the way your office has stepped in. Um, and and we are going to continue to, um, rely on on your office to to help coordinate these things. Uh, number three, um, the committee would welcome the information that that you just offered up. Um, I would say that, um, I don't want you to go out of your way to to recreate something. So if that information's readily. Whatever information is readily available, I would say let's start with providing that before we ask you to go off and do additional homework or put additional stuff together. And we can review that. And, uh, if we need more information after that, uh, we'll come back to you. But for meantime, we don't want to, uh, create any more work. Uh, for you. So if it's something that you have readily available, shoot it over. Um, to the committee, let's put it all in one email. So. That email I'll ask, uh, Conway, I see you, I'm coming to you next. That email will, um. I would ask either come from you or mayor's office government relations and just make sure it's just one email. So, uh, Mister Ramos, if you can collect the the appropriate information as you described from procurement. And or DGS and or additional agencies and aggregate that, that would be greatly appreciated. So that concludes my statement. Um, Councilman Conway, before I come to you, committee members, do you have anything else to add to that statement? Or did I adequately address, uh, Council Vice President Milton?
I I first of all, yes, you did adequately, um. Explain, um, what we want and, um, you know, I just want to add, I just want to add. Uh, generally, this is a general statement. When we get reports and and outright, there is the word opposition. That puts the council, the committee in a in a protection mood. Because we are the ones that submit these bills. And we're we're trying to just get, this is the time where we are trying to work hard. We're trying to help create jobs for the people in our city. We're trying to make changes. And we need the administration and I know this administration wants to work and help too. It it's. It's the time, as you said, Mister Chair, these are things that the mayor. Agrees on and has, um, ran his campaign on, has worked on. You. All have been put in these positions to help with that. And it's, you know, this is passion. This is not just passion with me. This is. Councilman Conway put this bill in because he sees things, he talks to his constituents, we all do. These are things, changes that are needed. We travel not around the city, we travel around this country and see. How this particular, um, subject matter has been one of the things on the forefront of many cities. I just came from not too long ago, um, uh, West Palm Beach, Florida and saw their new, um. Their new train system that eventually is going to connect, it's going to connect to, um. Uh, other, I'll just say other parts of Florida. They have a fleet of electric vehicles sitting at some of these. They're on the forefront, um, right down the road in, uh, uh. What's the city in Pennsylvania? Um, it's on the tip of my tongue with a P. Somebody help me. Pittsburgh. They have been on the forefront with different things all around us. All the cities around us are moving forward, creating jobs. They're in there using, uh, um, my colleague, um. Ryan Dorsey, uh, which I definitely agree upon the statement he just made. He gave an example of something that could happen with e-bikes. And we, and in our city, if you look around, look at the, how our Jones Falls Trail is connected going to downtown. Think we, you have to start thinking creative and not just outright opposing things. Have that. Have that, don't wait for us to tell you to give the data, have bring it to us to show that you are looking at this. Um, I. There's, when he mentioned, when my colleague mentioned about these e-bikes, right in my mind flashed. That Jones Falls Trail that leads. Down to the, for my district, all a number of districts down to city, down to the city, you could ride a bike there. Think, um, there's agencies like the Transportation Department, connect that bridge over Cold Spring Lane. These are things that can help with our environment. And it not just takes, you know, creative money. It, you have to sit down as a group and start thinking about this and and, um, Councilman Costello. Kind of put that into conducive words. And we're not trying to. Just blame, we just, we're trying to get, uh, get people working and thinking and it's about us working together. And I I just want to, I'll stop there. Thank you, Mister Chair, for giving me that time.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, anyone else who wants to add to my response to the administration, specifically to Deputy Administrator Ramos? Before we go to Councilman Conway? All right, Councilman Conway, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I I wanted to add, um, so, um. Deputy Administrator Ramos alluded to, um, the rate at which we will replace vehicles and that. When I drafted this bill before I put it out there, that was one of the first questions that I went to DGS with. To understand how quickly we currently replace vehicles with the master lease program. So, um, with a thirty million dollar yearly allocation assumption, uh, we would replace about eighty eighty six percent. Of all vehicles by twenty thirty. Um, so once again, the goals here is to is to at least have a fifty percent. Allocation by twenty thirty and a hundred percent by twenty forty, of course, depending on what's available on the market. But that's very achievable. Um, if we're already planning to replace. Um, eighty six percent of our vehicles by twenty thirty, why why not make them EV? Uh, when we start looking at the cost effectiveness of this, um, it it could go that much that much further. So I think, uh, the feasibility of doing this, it it's it's very, very achievable. Very reachable and I I I made sure to, um, before I put this out there, made sure to really understand what it meant to our our ability to meet the goal. We can definitely meet the goal. Uh, it it takes certainly some, um, some innovation in thinking about operationally, what we'll need to change, infrastructurally, what we'll need to change, but. Um, by way of actually vehicles, we can do this. Just wanted to share that, Mister Chair. Oh, and, um, also, also, uh, might be helpful, um, roughly sixty four percent of our vehicles are light duty vehicles. Um, so these are things that we can, uh, almost, almost certainly, um, I think with the exception of maybe the police vehicles. But almost certainly, um, turn those into EV vehicles pretty, pretty easily. So I I I think when we start looking at the opportunity to flip from gasoline vehicles to EV vehicles, the opportunity is definitely there.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, uh, any other questions for our city agencies? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair. Um. The question I had, uh, was around the, in the, within the finance report, but I'm I'm guessing there was some consultation with DGS. Uh, in the report, it 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 also allocated a cost of battery replacement as being needed every four to five years. Um, and I Googled one of the vehicles that was listed in the finance report and did not indicate that, and in fact, it had a warranty of eight years. Um, but my understanding is that the battery life of these vehicles is somewhere between eight to ten. So I was just curious. Uh, how that was, um, that point was arrived at and what what analysis was used there?
Um, I I can kick us off and then, um, I will pass this on, sorry, again, Chi Chi Nyaga Nash, Director DGS. Um, and then I'll pass it on to Christopher Lyons, our our chief of of fleet. Um, so. When, when one looks up information about, um, whether it's miles per gallon or or battery life of of a vehicle, most of the data that you're going to see is. Based on, um, on private citizen use as well as, um, testing done in a very, in a very, um. Like confined environment. So on a track, um, you know, the right kind of traction on the ground, there's, um. You know, it's it's perfect conditions under which the, well, not perfect, but the conditions under which vehicles are tested in order to come up with these numbers. Are vastly different from the conditions, um, under which our city vehicles are driven. And so we, we often have to remind folks that we can't, we can't. Compare perfectly with what we see as far as manufacturer data on, um. Battery longevity, miles per gallon, um, when we look at how we have to operate our vehicles and, um. And and the condition of the environment in which we operate them. Um, Mister Lyons, if there's anything else you'd like to add, please, please go ahead.
Thank you, man. Uh, Christopher Lyons, Chief of the Fleet Management Division. Uh, sir, that data was provided to us by manufacturers. One of the things I would caution you when looking at battery life. Uh, battery life, um, the information we get from manufacturers is based on region. So the environmental extremes and the temperature extremes that the vehicles operate play a significant role in, um, in determining battery life. Uh, it was based off of, uh, this year's current marketing of equivalent vehicles that we, uh, would be, we would be purchasing. Um, but on a personal note, I will tell you that, um. Uh, I do know that as manufacturers are are focusing more on EVs, there's a tremendous focus on trying to increase the warranties on battery life. Unfortunately, from a fleet perspective, that hasn't passed down into actual warrantable data yet. Um, so we're looking forward over the years to come, um, for having that battery life increased. But as it stands right now, the information we provided came straight from the manufacturers of the equivalent vehicles.
And quick follow up on that, um. I guess how does that then, and that's helpful information because I'm like, this doesn't really add up from my understanding of how these vehicles work. Um. The, uh, so so why would, if it's it's a vehicle manufacturer warranty is beyond. That four to five year window, why would the finance department calculate that as having to incur the cost of the battery replacement?
Um, so, so like I said, the data that we provided came from the manufacturers and the vehicle types that. We've already scouted out and identified as equivalent vehicle for for replacement. There are various manufacturers that for specific models or specific manufacturers are willing to extend the battery life. Uh, however, with the current supply chain issues, most of the US domestic manufacturers have not increased that battery life. For those.
I'm asking, uh, yeah, I understand that. I'm asking, why would the? Why would it be implied that the city would bear the cost that the vehicle was still under warranty?
If the vehicle was still under warranty, the city would not be, would not incur the cost.
Okay, so that's what I was confused by because part of the calculation is the city incurring the cost of the replacement. When in all likelihood for most of these vehicles, I don't think they would apply across the board, obviously. Um, for things like dump trucks or fire. I just don't know enough about those type of vehicles, but I I do know. Sort of stemming from Councilman Stokes and 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 Costello's line of questioning around the council vehicles there. The, the, my understanding is that the warranty would incur the cost unless I've misunderstood that incorrectly this entire time, but that'd be my understanding.
Well, for council vehicles with those being leased vehicles, if the warranty did not, the lease company would bear the cost for those. Um, but for city owned vehicles, um, whether that be, you know, Ford, Chevrolet, Chrysler, um. Those are the the information that we provided, uh, BBMR was based off of their current warranty position, not the, not their future warranty position.
Okay. Um, and if I could ask one more, uh, Mister Chair on this. Um, the other question I had, uh, was around our relationship to, uh. Company, private companies that have expressed interest and we've actually passed, uh, legislation to enact, um, charging. company, private companies that have expressed interest and we've actually passed, uh, legislation to enact, um, charging stations uh, by BGE and potentially others. Um, how has that weighed into the analysis of potential costs for, uh, charging stations? Um, if, if, if this bill were enacted and our, our fleet were expanded, how could we engage private partners in, in building the city's capacity to handle this?
Um, Mr. Chair and Councilman, this is Liam Davis of Baltimore City DOT. I just wanted to jump in, because we were referencing the, um, the franchise agreement that was, um, agreed to in the previous term between the City of Baltimore and BGE. And it's, uh, a lot, it's helping facilitate the installation of public chargers on city property and in public right of way under BGE's EV Smart Program. So the, the really clear thing to understand about that franchise agreement is those are publicly accessible chargers for, you know, the general public. The conversation that is being had today in terms of the need for EV charging infrastructure is specific to the city fleet. They wouldn't be publicly accessible. And I imagine DGS could get into this a little bit, um, more, more specifically. But I imagine the charging infrastructure for, uh, fleet vehicles, based on the size and what type of vehicles we're talking about, it's probably gonna look a little different than what you might see on, um, the street. Uh, increasingly as the, those public chargers are built out. So hopefully that cleared some stuff up.
Yes, um, I don't know if anyone wants to add anything. Those are, those are my questions. Everything else I had, had written down was already covered, Mr. Chair. But I don't know if DGS or anyone else wants to respond to any of that, or would be considering. I, I, well, I guess I would say if to DGS to respond or to piggyback on that, if you could, um, because I clearly it's a goal to accomplish this over a period of time. Um, I guess, what does that look like as far as engaging, uh, private partners? Is that, is that an option in your, sort of existing plan to expand the electric fleet?
Sure. Um, so I, I appreciate Mr. Davis weighing in on, and, and explaining the difference between the BGE franchise agreement and the charging infrastructure behind the fence, which, meaning at, at city yards and facilities. Um, and, and to, to one of the last points that, that Mr. Davis, um, threw out there and asked for DGS to weigh in on. Yes, we would require, um, charging infrastructure that is different from, from what is used for the public, depending on the, um, on the agency, the type of vehicle and their operations. So in some cases, we, we may be able to get away with, with, um, chargers that are not fast chargers. So if we, for instance, know that an agency has the ability to, um, to leave their vehicles and not use them overnight, then they wouldn't necessarily need the same fast charge infrastructure that have, that an agency that only has a few hours or an hour to, to return that vehicle back to a full charge in between shifts would need. And so that needs to be taken into consideration as we, as we look at infrastructure that's going in. Um, we, we have started working with the state and piggybacking on some of their contracts for the, um, installation of the charging infrastructure. The conversation about, um, a possibility of, of private-public partnership is one that we, we have, um, engaged in, but haven't fully, um, haven't fully worked through. Some of the challenges on, that we can foresee with that is that there is no, um, the benefit to a private entity in, in that space would be very different than if this was being pursued for a public charging station, because city agencies would not be paying for, uh, the ability or for the, for the, um, accessibility to charge their vehicles. The, that cost of the electricity needed to charge the vehicles is still a city expense. And so, um, trying to understand what the benefit would be for, for a private investor or a private partner, um, is, it's a little bit, it's a little bit nuanced considering, um, the funding stream. Or the revenue stream, I should say.
Okay, got it. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll hold the rest until I come back, you come back around.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I got a few other kind of general questions, um, interests, I think I'd like to have addressed in this bill, maybe with some further amendments, um, and to see what other information we can, kind of pull together before a next hearing on this. Um, uh, another thought that I had kind of in addition to the idea I expressed before about essentially evaluating the, the actual needs of fleet vehicles and seeing how vehicles can be downsized in order to meet those actual needs. Um, would, you know, would also be some sort of evaluation of, you know, how, how efficiently agencies are using vehicles. If they're, if they're being parked far, farther away from where they're actually used than they need to be. If there's some overall means of mileage reduction that can be affected by, say, DGS evaluating the, the ways in which mileage is accrued and conveying, um, suggestions for operational change to other, to, to those utilizing agencies, um, how, how that can happen, how we can factor that in here. Because I think mileage reduction is also a part of fleet management as well. Um, so I'd be interested to hear, you know, the extent to which we do this or could further do this. Uh, and then, and I think that also with that, some evaluation of the capacity for uh, other motorized equipment reduction or elimination. Um, if the overall goal here is, um, carbon reduction or, uh, you know, it's, it's not just carbon, right? It's, uh, it's nitrogen, it's other, it's other, uh, pollutants as well that are of concern. Um, there are significant adverse impacts to the use of, um, small engines that are not in any way regulated the way that motor vehicle engines are regulated. Um, and, uh, which we rely on for landscaping maintenance in particular, uh, to a significant degree and significant environmental impact. Um, so I, I'd, I'd like to look at how we can reduce that kind of usage of, of motors as well. Um, and how that can be an incorporated part of, uh, a, a shift uh, that we're looking for here. Can we, can DGS talk about that just a little, these ideas a little bit or respond to these thoughts? I'm, I'm forming them kind of on the spot here.
Uh, yes, yes, we can. Um, so your, your first point about, um, tracking mileage and utilization, every, um, every few years, DGS Fleet does engage in a utilization study, um, which is an effort that we undertake, um, in collaboration with the agencies. Um, and the reason we need agencies and, and why we can't just pull data out of faster to inform the utilization is because, um, so, so, so we, we analyze the data, we look at how much a vehicle has been driven, um, you know, how many miles went on it? What agency is it, is it, um, assigned to? But then we need to then have conversations with agencies and discuss, um, outliers. So an example might be, there might be a vehicle at the Back Riv River Water Treatment Plant that had very few miles on it compared to a, a similar make and model that, that has been assigned to a, a DOT traffic. Um, and maybe not Traffic Enforcement Officer, but, um, a DOT inspector, for instance. And, and we don't have visibility into how an asset is used until we have a conversation with the agency. So in this case, that vehicle at the water treatment plant, while at face value, it looks like it's underutilized because it doesn't get a lot of mileage, it is being fully utilized to its full capacity. It just has a, a much smaller footprint on which to travel. Um, and so, so we, we do have an understanding of how, how vehicles are, are being used. And that offers us the opportunity to, again, raise awareness to agencies about vehicles that, that we believe are being underutilized. And in the past, we have successfully been able to, um, reduce the city fleet by, by taking that approach and looking at vehicles that, that were not being utilized at all, that perhaps were sitting in a yard and had been, um, you know, assigned to an individual who is no longer there and therefore were just sitting there. Um, so that is an approach that we take in collaboration, um, with the agencies and it has been successful. Um, you, you raised the, um, the, the issue of, of tracking mileage. Um, I would just caution against, um, thinking that we can just look at mileage of, just mileage in and of itself without thinking of the, of, of the other external factors. And the way we have seen that come back to bite us when we just talk about mileages in years, for instance, when, when, um, we've been able to push for a reduction in the number of vehicles, we then see that the fewer vehicles that remain in the fleet necessarily have to drive more. So that speaks to more efficiency. There are fewer vehicles, but that same vehicle is being driven more to, 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 to serve, to, you know, to render the same services as two vehicles were rendering in the past. And so, um, just needing to be, to be, um, careful in how we talk about tracking mileage in, in regard, in, in, as, uh, and the fact that it is not synonymous with utilization or effective utilization. But short answer is, Councilman Dorsey, we do undertake that exercise, um, and, and it's one that we do collaboratively with the agencies. Um, you're.
Can I just respond to that? Because I think you're gonna go on to kind of my other.
I am, I was about to, yes, sir.
Um, uh, it, it's interesting, your initial response, uh, was kind of like the opposite of the way I was thinking, like, uh, looking at vehicles that appear to be underutilized. And I guess what I'm thinking about is things, and, and then you also used a, kind of the perfect example. Exactly what I had in mind was, um, traffic enforcement officers. Um, they're effectively centrally dispatched, um, from right in the middle of downtown to wherever they may go on a reactionary three-one-one, uh, driven basis. Um, you know, the result of which is that if there is even one three-one-one call that they need to respond to in the farthest northeast corner of the city, they have to travel the greatest distance possible from there. Um, uh, just to respond to that one three-one-one call. And there's the operational kind of like, uh, the routing of responding to whatever three-one-one calls happen to be on there. Um, you know, a given, uh, TEO's list that day. And I just wondering if, um, you know, that level of collaborative assessment drills down into the possibility of suggesting overall other, like, uh, kind of broader implied operational changes that could reduce that mileage into, you know, uh, quartile, whatever, um, quadrant-based, uh, operational deployment, things like that, that, that could reduce and, and create greater efficiency. And, because I, because, because I know, not only that create efficiency, but that, that could deliver better service to the public, right? Because I use that example of the farthest northeast corner of the city, because that's essentially where I represent. And as a result of that, we receive far, far, far lesser, um, citizen service in the form of traffic enforcement. And I'm sure that there are other ways that that, um, that, that, that services are, uh, unequally or inequitably distributed throughout the city. Um, as a result of operations that are, who, whose models are driven specifically by fleet deployment and employee deployment, um, uh, based on centralization of deployment and things like that. So I, I, I'd love to, you know, get a sense of how much more deeply we can go into that collaborative assessment. Um, you know, uh, and when I, when I, again, when I'm thinking about mileage, it's like, how many miles are being put on just to get from that central point of deployment out to some far out point in the city? Um, so that's, uh, but I really appreciate your response on this and uh, love to hear what you have to say about the rest of my question about small engines and such.
Sure.
Director Nagai Nash, can I jump in? Mr. Chair, can, but to, to that, this point. So, uh, Councilor Dorsey, you, you hit the nail on the head. Like that is something that we are, we, we have an eye on, making sure that we're deploying resources, that we have an equity lens to our deployment of services. And a lot of that is where our folks, you know, where our folks stationed and where, and how long does it take for us to get to the work? It, it is something that's very high, like constantly in my mind. Uh, the one thing I want to flag that it is, it is not always a, a one-size-fits-all, it doesn't always make sense to have a yard in every, in, uh, in every district. Like I think about when we did the quadrant approach to, to waste collection, it, it created artif, when we had a very different staffing model than we have right now, it created artificial staffing shortages. Uh, because you had folks assigned and we weren't able, so it is, it is definitely something that we need to look at, is something that when we look at, look at data of, uh, of services rendered throughout the city and all the different aspects that, uh, that we're looking, we have an eye towards. Are we getting to the, to the outer rim of the city? Are we, are we making sure that folks feel comfortable calling three-one-one, that we're not, you know, that, that our three-one-one system isn't perpetuating that inequity? But it's not always like a one-size-fits-all, and I'm happy to talk a little bit more about, about that and some of the efforts we, we're, we're looking at to, uh, in, in greater detail on private.
Thank you, Dan. I, I really appreciate you jumping in there too. Uh, it, as I was thinking about all this, I, I was, I was sure you would have something to contribute, uh, anyway, and I kind of neglected to say so. So thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think I did have kind of one, one more thing.
Um, please, please make it brief.
Yeah, sure. Um, at the outset of this term, the mayor's office and CAO, uh, um, made some strides to, I forget what we call it, but, but essentially publicly present procurement information, including, I think, fleet contracts and, um, what we're buying. Uh, I guess I'm just wondering, do we have or can we have a public-facing, um, like webpage where anybody can see kind of all of the vehicles in the fleet? And, um, and particularly also what their kind of projected end of life is? And, um, barring any technical, um, uh, necessity to, to making that happen. Um, do we have any, uh, I guess I'd be interested to know each of the agency's uh, fleet assets and what the, what they are, even, you know, if it's not posted publicly, I'd be interested to see what our assets actually look like, agency by agency, uh, in particular with an eye for end of life of those vehicles.
Uh, Councilman Dorsey, that is, uh, data that we have in faster, and I'd be happy to have a conversation, um, with you separately about perhaps the viability of using open data. You know, website to have that hosted.
Thanks, Director. Let's, let's, uh, because we're getting a little outside of the scope of this bill, let's take that conversation offline. Councilman Dorsey, have anything else before we move on?
No, I just think, um, that question arose to me because of the specific, um, bill at hand with an eye toward, you know, maintaining the existing fleet for its, um, you know, expected end of life and not replacing things prematurely. I think that speaks to both DGS and the Finance Department's concerns related to this bill. So I, I'm trying to get a, a sense of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Councilman, thank you very much. Two years in, you would think I know how to run this thing, or the webex. Um, colleagues, any other questions?
One, one quick one, I just want to clarify, and I know we did a lot of talk on this, but I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. So, um, for, um, battery replacements in the assessment from finance, we assume that we take on that cost at four to five years. Um, given that we drive our vehicles a ton, um, and the different, uh, climatic considerations for the region. Um, but I also know that most automakers have a eight to 10-year warranty on, on EV vehicles and their batteries. So would it be appropriate for us to not have to take on that assumption, knowing that, number one, um, if a battery dies in the first five years, it's covered by warranty? And then we, we generally replace especially many of our light duty vehicles within a seven-year period. So then we'll never have to take on that expense. Would that be fair to assume? Would that be fair to assume?
I will defer to Chief Lyons to respond to that.
So sir, absolutely. If, if the vehicles that we're looking at replacing have a Z E V alternative that meets the requirements of the city, that has a battery life that exceed, you know, that exceeds eight years, absolutely, we can take that off the list. I would caution that while we plan to replace a lot of the light duty vehicles within an eight year time window because of, you know, timing of vehicle deliveries, especially what we've noticed in the last year, year and a half with the supply chain problems. Many of those vehicles end up running closer to 10 years before their actual replacement arrives and is put in service. We should just be cautious about that level of risk that we're assuming when we start pushing that far beyond the manufacturer's recommendations.
Got it. So you're saying our intention is to replace every seven years. Sometimes we don't quite meet that. And if we did, then we could be faced with the burden of having to replace a battery after 10 years.
Exactly. It's less of a risk for administrative vehicles, but for the vocational fleet, and you'll forgive me, I know that raises time sensitive. When we look at our fleet, we have two components. We have an administrative component or a light duty component where there's C E Vs available. And then we've got the vocational component, vehicles that have typically accessory equipment mounted to them, such as snowplow spreaders, load packers. When we start looking at the light duty component, yes, we try and target an eight year useful life for those. In many cases, that exceeds to nine and 10 years because of vehicle replacement timing. For the light duty component, your statement is absolutely correct. I would just caution about the level of risk because most of those vehicles do not get replaced in seven year increments. It's with very few exceptions and with high use vehicles such as mark patrol vehicles, for example. Those have so far surpassed their useful life when they hit seven, you know, six and seven years. They're no longer viable at that point in time.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, any other questions for our city agencies? Outstanding. Marguerite, let's move over to public testimony, please.
Mr. Chair, I have three attendees listed who would like to testify. However, if there are any other attendees who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function or send via chat. With that being said, Mr. Chair, the first speaker is
Marguerite, real quick, how many, that's over WebEx, how many callers do we have over the phone line?
None.
Excellent. All right. Let's take it away, Marguerite.
Okay, the first speaker is
Hang on, for the folks testifying, we're going to ask you to limit your testimony to two minutes, please, and thank you. And please address your comments to the chair of the committee, not to the to the city agencies, please and thank you.
First speaker is Dave, last name spelled A R N D T. Go ahead, please. Dave? You're unmuted. Oh, let's try that again. For some reason, I can't unmute.
Dave's a constituent of mine in Locust Point. I'm sure he's already reached out on this matter. And if he's unavailable, or if you can hear me, Dave, feel free to provide your comments and writing via email. I know you and I email all the time.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, you're good to go.
Okay, I don't know why I couldn't hear, but thank you, Councilman Costello, for this opportunity. I really support this bill. I'm in favor of it. My only concern really was is it allowed the use of hydrogen vehicles as part of the definition. And currently hydrogen vehicles really are not clean energy because almost all hydrogen created today is from fossil fuels as a fuel itself. So I would really put this, and I put this in my comments that I issued, that when hydrogen is produced by 75% of it being from green energy sources like electricity, then we can support hydrogen cars in the future. The other item that I really have is since I have an electric vehicle, the battery life is actually guaranteed for eight years. But the state of Maryland goes with the California warranty, which is 10 years. So the actual, excuse me, the actual warranty is 10 years for the state of Maryland on electric car vehicles. So just to keep that in mind as you're building out these replacement timetables. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker will be Michelle, last name D I E T Z.
Good morning.
Michelle?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Costello and members of the Ways and Means Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today in support of Council Bill 21-0159 offered by Councilman Conway. For the record, my name is Michelle Dietz. I'm the Director of Government Relations for the Maryland DC Chapter of the Nature Conservancy. Our organization is committed to reducing global greenhouse gas emissions. And in order to achieve this goal, we must rapidly transition to a clean energy economy. Maryland has set ambitious goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and combat climate change across the state. By increasing city agency procurement goals of zero emissions vehicles, the city of Baltimore will take concrete steps to cut emissions. Along with executive and legislative actions such as Maryland's participation in the Clean Trucks Initiative and the 2021 passage of the Zero Emissions Bus Transition Act. Passing this bill will set our state and local governments on the right track to meet emissions reductions commitments. The transportation sector is the largest contributor to climate change in Maryland, accounting for about 40% of greenhouse gas emissions statewide. In addition to greenhouse gases, both gas and diesel powered vehicles emit air pollutants and harm or that harm pulmonary and cardiovascular health. Nitrogen oxides are knocks from fossil fuel combustions are precursors to ground level ozone, which can trigger asthma attacks. These dangerous health risks disproportionately impact black and brown communities and low income neighborhoods. Eliminating emissions from Baltimore City vehicles will protect public health by reducing the risk from air pollution, pollutants, and will subsequently reduce household healthcare costs. For these reasons, the Nature Conservancy urges a favorable report on Council Bill 21-0159. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Stephen L E A S.
Hi there. Yeah, my name's Stephen Leas and I am a, oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great, great. So yeah, my name is Stephen Leas and I am a volunteer and coordinator with Sunrise Movement Baltimore as well as Sunrise Movement Maryland. And one of our members, Olivia Yates, was going to testify, but she's not, she had to leave early. She's a freshman at the Community College of Baltimore County. So we're a youth organization trying to stop the climate crisis and I'm going to read her testimony now. Dear Committee Chair Costello and members of the committee, my name is Olivia Yates and I am representing Sunrise Movement Baltimore. Today I am asking you to support procurement dash zero emission vehicles 21-0159. In 2019, in the United States, 29% of greenhouse gas emissions came from transportation. Out of other categories like electricity production, agriculture and industry, the transportation sector leads in all of them, the U S and the creation of greenhouse gases. To get to 50% of Baltimore City's fleet to be net zero by 2030 and 100% of the fleet by 2040 is a good plan to not only bring down carbon emissions in Baltimore, but also limit its contribution to greenhouse gas emissions in the country overall. Zero emission vehicles also last longer and require less maintenance than a gas powered vehicle does, offering Baltimore City a more sustainable option. These vehicles are better for the environment and our health by significantly reducing pollution from exhaust emissions, which should contribute to changing the city's air quality, which also means less healthcare costs due to the decreasing number of people with health conditions. Also, zero emission vehicles have the added benefit being quieter, which means that they will, which means less noise pollution. Lastly, transitioning the fleet to zero emission vehicles is also an opportunity to look at Baltimore's transportation system as a whole and who is not benefiting from the current system. For all these reasons, I am asking that you support procurement zero emission vehicles 21-0159. Thank you. I'd also like to say on a personal note, Sunrise Movement, well, on a personal note, I'm a proud owner of an electric vehicle. And I really want to just express the urgency concerning the climate crisis as it applies to the youth. This is a global struggle and the need to decrease emissions by half by 2030 is a really important necessity that states like Maryland and cities like Baltimore have a responsibility to lead on and also a tremendous opportunity to lead on. So there's really no amount of urgency or quickness that would be, you know, that wouldn't help in bills like these that deal with environmental and climate justice. And if Baltimore can transition to a zero emission economy while prioritizing low income and marginalized communities and lead the way and lead markets rather than kind of reacting to them, then we will be a model for the rest of the world and cities across the coast. Thanks so much.
Steph Compton?
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Ways and Means Committee and for the opportunity to provide some feedback. My name is Stephanie Compton. I live in Baltimore City in District Three, work for Energy Justice Network and support the Cleaner Baltimore Coalition. And we do support the bill for zero emission vehicles. And while we're generally supportive of zero emission vehicles, the current definition leaning on the California state law includes hydrogen vehicles. So we're wary of hydrogen vehicles because they currently 95% of hydrogen is produced from fat natural gas, which is a huge greenhouse gas emitter, which we're trying to curtail with this bill. So because hydrogen isn't an energy source, but a storage strategy that requires significant energy inputs, its application in any situation where electricity could be used directly, fundamentally, it won't make sense no matter what progress is made because of entropy and the inherent losses in conversion. So the wind and solar energy that might be used to generate clean hydrogen could directly be put to use powering electric cars. So cutting out the energy wasting middle steps like conversion to hydrogen and back. So while hard to electrify sectors still exist or where other storage strategies are better, hydrogen could make sense. Otherwise, we think it's best to avoid the losses and to electrify directly. So for identifying hydrogen, there's a scale of nine color codes. Green hydrogen is the only acceptable solution because green hydrogen is produced through a water electrolysis process by employing renewable electricity and there's no carbon dioxide emission during the production process. And even if they use green hydrogen, it's still a bad idea just because it's less efficient than simply using that wind and solar to power an electric vehicle instead of converting water to hydrogen and back with major energy loss. So it's best to use electric vehicles and not hydrogen vehicles and to get those electric vehicles powered by wind and solar. All of this to say, hydrogen buses or trucks, if available, should be permitted only if electric ones aren't an option and only with green hydrogen. Electric vehicles that are fueled by a wind and solar grid are the only true zero emission vehicles. So in referencing the California standard, we want to leave out hydrogen and only include the electric vehicles and plug in hybrids. And also require that the electricity powering vehicles come from wind and solar energy purchased by the city. Thank you for your leadership in the climate action, Councilman Conway and Tier Nine co-sponsors.
Julie, last name R O D R I G O.
Hi, I'm here. How's the audio?
Very good.
Okay. Good afternoon, Committee Chair and everyone on the line. My name is Julieta Rodrigo. My address is 6 Herndon Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland 21403. I'm the Urban and Community Resilience Manager at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. We're a regional nonprofit organization with a mission to save the Chesapeake Bay. Part of my job is to engage with local policies that protect the health of the people and the environment around the bay, and that includes Baltimore, which is why I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. We're applauding the effort to convert the city's fleet to zero emissions vehicles. If adopted, this bill would improve public health, protect the bay and further social justice. We urge a favorable recommendation from the committee on this bill with an amendment to Section 35A-5 to include a more complete annual report. Now, some of our recommendations have already come up in conversation so far. The existing language within the bill requires the city purchasing agency with cooperation from all city agencies to submit an annual report on the number and amount of zero emission vehicles. We request the following additions to the report. One, the current composition and age of the fleet. Two, progress toward the interim and final goals. And three, any new zero emission vehicle technology that could help reduce the need for exempting certain vehicle classes. These amendments would strengthen the bill by increasing the accountability and speed of the transition. I thank you for your time and attention to this important matter.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public testimony.
We have another constituent of the called Dick Williams, who sent a private message, who I do not think was called on. Marguerite, can you look for Dick Williams?
Dick Williams?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council Chair Costello and members of the Ways and Means Committee. My name is Dick Williams. I'm a resident of Baltimore City and I'm also testifying on behalf of several conservation and environment and environmental justice organizations, of which I'm in leadership. They are specifically Baltimore Blue Green Just, Friends of the Jones Falls and Green Grace, the Environmental Ministry of the Episcopal Diocese of Maryland. We support the aspirations of the proposed Zero Emissions Vehicles Bill 21-0159, only wishing that date buys could be sooner. That's because all of us are living in the global climate crisis, which is having considerable human, financial and environmental impacts on our city that are known and measurable already. In particular, I want to point out sea level rise stemming from the increasing level of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, combined with land subsidence or the downward movement of the earth's surface. As is well recognized through peer reviewed scientific journals and reported by legacy news media outlets, atmospheric greenhouse gas levels are creating global warming, which impacts everything as we know it. A good share of this stems from vehicles operating on fossil fuels by an increasing global population. Because of this, record hotter years are now occurring consecutively. Let me draw your attention to two issues. One, the significant underreporting of greenhouse gas emissions by many countries around the world, according to a Washington Post investigation reported last November, and subsidence. I am a student of these issues rather than an expert or scientist. As to the underreporting of greenhouse gas emissions, excuse me, the gap reported by the Post of billions of tons of greenhouse gases annually is quote, "big enough to move the needle on how much the earth will warm," end quote. So we know major glaciers and ice sheets around the world are melting at a rate that alarms people of low lying countries like the Maldives to the concomitant sea level rise and its effects elsewhere, which include the burying of Smith Island in the Chesapeake Bay and increasing sunny day flooding in the inner harbor and elsewhere around the city. About land subsidence, let me refer you to the U S E P A website on the subject. In very short, after the ice of the Ice Age melted and the extra weight on northern hemispheric areas of what's now Canada and the northern U S was lifted, these land masses began to rise and the mid Atlantic region started to sink or subside. This subsidence is in our region continues today unabated. Hopefully, this thumbnail discussion of sea level rise combined with subsidence helps to paint a clear picture of the importance of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by enacting the Zero Emissions Vehicle Bill, finally, which is potentially paid for by proceeds I believe the city is or will be receiving from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of last November. Thank you in closing for allowing me to testify about this legislation. And I thank you in particular, Councilman Conway, for bringing it to the council and to this committee and for your attention. Appreciate it. Bye.
Taylor Smith Hams?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Committee Chair Costello and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Taylor Smith Hams and I'm the Advocacy and Outreach Senior Manager at Blue Water Baltimore. My name is Taylor Smith-Hams, and I'm the Advocacy and Outreach Senior Manager at Blue Water Baltimore. Our mission is to restore the quality of Baltimore's waterways to foster a healthy environment and thriving communities. And we respectfully request your support of this bill. The climate crisis poses significant risks to Baltimore's communities, waterways, and environment. For example, precipitation in Maryland has already increased by over two and a half inches per decade since 2000. Baltimore City is not equipped to handle this increased rainfall as we've seen in incidents such as the devastating 2018 Frederick Avenue Corridor flood that damaged over 200 homes and the unacceptable rate of sewage backups into residents' homes across the city. Local jurisdictions like Baltimore have a critical role to play in reducing emissions and modeling a more sustainable path forward. Procurement practices are a particularly important leverage point for municipalities striving to take action on climate change. By converting the city's fleet to zero emission vehicles, this bill will help reduce the climate warming emissions from government operations. This is a common sense step for the city to take and should be one component of Baltimore City's response to the climate crisis. During implementation, we urge the city to prioritize minority and women-owned companies throughout this fleet conversion process. Additionally, we urge the city councils to continue to advocate for clean and accessible public transportation options across Baltimore, particularly the Red Line, to provide equitable transportation options for all Baltimoreans while reducing the use of private vehicles. Thank you to Councilman Conway for introducing this bill, to Vice President Middleton for speaking to the urgency of this issue and the need for Baltimore to lead, and to Councilman Dorsey for raising questions and ideas about reducing the size of the fleet overall and replacing vehicles with other modes where possible. We urge a favorable report. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other public testimony?
No, sir.
Okay, Councilman Conway, Director, we have our marching orders to get working on the amendments. Everyone's good with what we discussed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, excellent. Please make sure that you work through the Mayor's Office of Government Relations and Director Thompson from Council President Mosby's office. And I would appreciate if Victor could take a look at whatever you all come up with. And then, Councilman Conway, I'll wait to hear back from you on scheduling a work session slash voting session. Sound good?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that sounds great.
Colleagues, I want to thank you for your two hours and 15 minutes today. City agencies, I want to thank all of you for all of your hard work put into reviewing and analyzing and commenting on this proposed legislation. And I want to thank all the members of the public for their critical testimony today. Thank you. We are now in recess.